I will call to order the meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on March 4th, 2022, if you're posting a notification to the press in accordance with Wisconsin 19.84. Commissioner Malard.
Thank you, President Myers. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Matt Perrinboon, the principal of Washington Elementary. And a little bit about Matt, he worked in the district for thirty-two, for twenty-two years. He began his career as a seventh grade science teacher at Franklin Middle School and taught there for thirteen years. Matt was then hired as the assistant principal at Edison Middle School and served in that position for six years. And for the past three years, Matt has been the principal at Washington Elementary. He received his undergrad degree from Edgewood College and master's in education leadership and from Cardinal Stretch University. In addition to these positions, Matt has served as the athletic coach at the middle and high school levels, served as a middle school science curriculum committee leader, and also worked as the dean of students. Mr. Perrinboon, who do you have with you tonight?
Good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce one of Washington's star students. We had two of them scheduled to join us tonight, but one of them's been out ill the last couple of days and unfortunately could not join us. But I would like to introduce Ms. Annabelle Hall. Annabelle is an enthusiastic learner who shows up to school each and every day with a positive attitude. She works very hard. She is a confident and pleasant student and is very greatly appreciated by her teachers and certainly serves as a leader amongst her peers. Her favorite subject is math, although she does very well in all of her classes. In addition to her performance at school, outside of school, Annabelle happens to be a star hockey player. So at this time, we'll join you for the pledge, Annabelle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It was quiet for that moment.
Okay. All right, could I get a, could I get a motion? Ah, my, my machine just died. That's good. Could I get a motion to adopt the Board of Education agenda?
So moved.
Okay, that was Commissioner Ardray and Commissioner Herta, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? All right, thank you. Safety message.
All right, good evening. I am here tonight to talk to you about daylight saving time. It is not daylight savings time, just seeing a little language lesson there. Daylight saving time begins March thirteenth, this coming Sunday. So don't want you late for church, set your clocks Saturday night before you go to bed. Studies have found that there was a thirteen percent reduction in pedestrian fatalities during the dawn to dusk hours of daylight saving time, as well as a seven percent reduction in robberies. I thought that was really interesting because there's more daylight and a little bit more safe. So a couple of reminders as we go into this, it's always good to flip your mattress, replace, replace your air filters, change your smoke detector and carbon monoxide detector batteries, that one's for you. Clean your dryer ducts, the tubes, tube goes into your dryer, check your gutters, check your first aid kits, and change your ceiling fan direction. In the summer, they should go counterclockwise. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I always have to Google the fan thing because I can never remember. Yeah, okay. All right, thank you very much. Student presenters tonight, first we have from Craig High School, Charlotte Mark. Yeah.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Charlotte Mark and I'm the school board representative for Craig High School. To begin, congratulations to junior Ben Witt and seniors Hunter Kleats and Olivia Rebaugh, as they all competed at the state level this last month for their respective sports. Swimmer Ben Witt placed tenth for the 100-meter butterfly and gymnast Olivia Rebaugh placed eighth for the uneven bars. Olivia, who actually qualified in three events, also placed thirteenth for vault. Finally, senior Kate Hummel will participate in a three-point challenge at the girls' basketball state tournament this Saturday in Green Bay. Students and future business leaders of America competed at the district level at Oak Creek High School last month. Four juniors and two seniors qualified for the state competition that will take place in Madison later this month. And just two weeks ago, twelve DECA students competed at the state level conference at the Grand Geneva Resort. They competed over three days and were against the top ten percent of DECA members in Wisconsin. Partners Jacob Kostanik and Jaden Chan placed second, and myself and Krista Norland placed first in our respective categories. They will compete at the international level in Atlanta, Georgia at the end of April. Senior and executive president of student council Katie Warner has organized the creation of fleece tie blankets for Janesville's carehouse. She was inspired by her AP government project on human trafficking and has hosted after-school meetings for students to watch movies and make blankets in the Craig cafeteria. In terms of club news, Craig's Key Club recently held a bake sale that raised $200. Also, FFA organized their own spirit week and placed many plastic cows or hidden heifers around the school for students to find for prizes. Also, Craig's yearbook staff, led by Cindy Habercorn, has been making final touches as their deadline creeps closer. Junior and co-editor Claudia Belky noted that this year's book has come along nicely because of the members' teamwork. Finally, Link Crew is currently recruiting new sophomores and juniors to participate as next year's link leaders for the class of 2026. Students had a short week last week due to conferences, and today only juniors reported to school to take the widely beloved ACT. Looking ahead, spring break is fast approaching, during which the softball team will have their first games and the baseball team will hold their tryouts. The National Honor Society recently released letters of congratulations to accepted juniors. Their official induction ceremony will take place next Tuesday night in the large auditorium. Also, Craig will be putting on its first musical since 2018. Directed by Courtney Hammer, students from all grade levels will be presenting The Addams Family with performances in May. To conclude, I would like to, of course, say thank you to the school board, as I look forward to presenting to you all again soon. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Addison Riley Lean. I am. I practice. And every time I see you out there, I check my notes.
I appreciate it so much. First off, it's so nice to see everyone's smiles. It made me so happy to see everyone's faces. Okay, I'll start. We have officially wrapped up our winter, sorry, let me start. My name is Addison Riley Lean, as you guys know. So at Parker, we have officially wrapped up our winter athletic season, and to celebrate, with the help of the Parker Band, we hosted a winter pep assembly on February 24th. At the assembly, we honored all of our winter athletes. In addition, our WIAA state qualifiers from spring, fall, and winter. Our state qualifiers, qualifiers this year include Abayathar Curry, Kayshon Pritchard, and Trey Sando for boys track, Maya Barnes, Janaya Iverson, Haley Kenyon, Amber Scoville, and Brooke Payne for girls track, Annie Barnes and Lucy Barnes in girls tennis, Vanna Campman and Tracy Kessler, who participated in the first ever WIA Women's Wrestling State Tournament, and Xander Rowley in boys swim, as well as Kayden Brannenberg in wrestling. We want to congratulate all of our state qualifying athletes, and we look forward to introducing these athletes to the board in the near future. Some of the highlights from the winter season include a regional championship appearance from our boys' basketball team, an undefeated Big Eight Conference championship from our wrestling team, Coach Shane Fleming, Coach Shane Fleming was named Big Eight Wrestling Coach of the Year, and Coach John Maurerman was named Big Eight Hockey Coach of the Year. We want to congratulate all of our winter student athletes and coaches on another successful season and send a special shout out and thank you and congratulations to John, to Coach John Maurerman, who retired at the end of the hockey season. Our Parker student athletes are looking forward to moving outdoors with our spring sports starting this month. Track had a great turnout with their first practice last night, and baseball, softball, boys' golf, boys' tennis, and girls' soccer will be starting in the coming weeks. Janesville Parker DECA students competed at the state DECA conference held at the Grand Geneva Resort in Lake Geneva, Wisconsin, on February 22nd through February 24th. More than 1,200 students from Wisconsin participated in the, and competed in the event run by Wisconsin DECA and the Department of Public Instruction, including eighteen from Parker High School. Parker DECA will be sending six students to the International DECA Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, from April 23rd through April 27th. The six qualifying students from Parker DECA are Amelia Ross, with her Finance and Operations Research Event placing first place, I, Addison Riley Lean, placed third place in the Buying and Merchandising Operations Research Event, Tatum McCann placed second place in Entrepreneurship Independent Business Plan, Andrew Edwardson placed sixth place for Entrepreneurship, entrepreneurship independent business plan, Carter Fugate placed seventh place for Hotel and Lodging Management, and Maddie Reed placed seventh place in Retail Merchandising. We want to say a big thank you to the Parker DECA advisors, John Zimmerman, Mike Wick, and Molly Mickelson for all their help. Fifty-nine Parker Arts Academy and Parker High School choir students traveled to New York on March 1st through 6th. Highlights of the trip included performing a concert at the Empire State Building, masterclasses with a Broadway artist and composer, seeing three Broadway shows, and visiting important sites, including the World Trade Center and the 9/11 Memorial. The Parker Choir Fine Arts Concert will be held on March 29th at 7:00 PM in the Parker High School Auditorium. The Parker Arts Academy is holding auditions for Anastasia, which will be performed May 6th through 15th. On Saturday, February 26th, Parker High School was hosted, was to host for the first in-person Wisconsin School Music Association District solo and ensemble festival in our area in two years. There were over 200 vocal, instrumental, and piano performances by students from Parker, Craig, Middlin, and Monroe High School, and Marshall and Franklin Middle Schools. Each performance event was viewed and rated by a professional music judge recommended by the WSMA. Festival manager was Mr. Beister, the Parker Band Director. Twenty-three individual music students from Parker qualified for the state solo and ensemble festival in vocal string and band performances. The state festival will be held at UW Whitewater at the end of April. March 12th through 18th, Parker's Washington Seminar Scholars from the AP American Government and Politics Class will be in Washington DC, conducting field research on their year-long projects. Led by social studies teacher Kate Bennett, 2022 is the fiftieth anniversary, anniversary of this program. Students have been working on setting up interviews with senators, representatives, and staffers to compete, to complete the research portion of their project. Students will also participate in a variety of pre-arranged meetings with government officials, visit Arlington, Arlington National Cemetery, and tour the monuments. On this, on this International Women's Day, I am proud to tell you that Parker High School has earned the College Board AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award for achieving high female representation in AP Computer Science Principles. Schools honored with the AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award have expanded the girls' access in AP Computer Science courses. Providing female students with access to computer science courses is critical to ensuring gender diversity in the industry's high-paying jobs and to drive innovation, creativity, and representation. The medium, the median annual wage for computer and information technology occupations was $91,250 in May of 2020. However, a Code.org survey finds women represent just 24% of the five million people in computing occupations. Computing jobs are the number-one source of new wages in the US, although 67% of all new jobs in STEM are in computing. Only 11% of STEM's bachelor's degrees are in computer science. Parker was just one of five schools in the state to earn this award. And finally, also an observer, observer, observance of this International Women's Day, I want to say a sincere thank you to our commissioners Myers, Hayworth, Herta, and Paul for your thankful, for your thankful leadership and service to our school district. You guys are inspiring young women around the school district every day with your leadership. Thank you.
That was really nice, both of you. Thank you very much. Wonderful. Okay, we have no citizen comments tonight, so we will move on to the consent agenda. How times change, yes. Okay. Okay. All right, I have approval from Commissioner Ardray and then a second from Commissioner Malard on the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, we have a presentation on teacher feedback on the evaluation system. Alison DeGraff and Kim Perrinboon, thank you.
All right, good evening. In 2011, the Department of Instruction required all districts across the state of Wisconsin to implement a supervision and evaluation system known as educator effectiveness. Districts could choose from either the state model of educator effectiveness based upon the work of Charlotte Danielson, or the CISA VI model based upon the work of James Strong. The school district of Janesville adopted the CISA VI model due to its ease of implementation and quality of support and professional development provided by CISA VI. In 2017, in collaboration with the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee, the Department of Instruction developed a survey required by all districts to participate in on a yearly basis to evaluate if educator effectiveness was developing educators and helping to retain them in this profession. Tonight, Alison and I will share results from this survey for the past five years with you. The purpose of the survey is to provide information to the Department of Public Instruction, local CISA's, individual school districts, and buildings within districts in five specific areas. Educator Effectiveness Implementation, Evaluator Effectiveness, the Feedback Process, Job Satisfaction, and Staff Collaboration. These results allow all stakeholder entities to create plans for continued improvement in not only developing effective educators, but also in developing effective administrators and retaining staff in the profession of education. The state requires a district to have a minimum of a 35% participation rate. Last year, Janesville had a participation rate of 67%, the highest rate in the state of Wisconsin, with the state average being 24%. The first domain area of the survey examines implementation of educator effectiveness. State law requires a professional to have a summative evaluation in their first year of hire within a district and every third year after that. The summative evaluation looks at the preponderance of evidence and feedback collected in six different standard areas to provide the professional with an overall summative score of either distinguished, effective, developing, in needs of improvement, or unsatisfactory. In Janesville, professionals in their second year of hire also receive a summative evaluation score. Evidence and feedback collected in the continuing educator year one and two cycles is used in addition to information from the continuing educator three cycle to give a summative evaluative score for a person in continuing educator three. Evaluators do reserve the right to add additional observations to any professional at any time and also reserve the right to put a professional on a plan for improvement if it is deemed warranted, regardless as to where they are within their cycle year. Planning is key and required for implementation of educator effectiveness. Every August, all evaluators receive professional development in educator effectiveness to review timelines and expectations. Evaluators also receive time to begin planning out classroom observations for the upcoming school year. During back-to-school meetings in August, evaluators then go over educator effectiveness timelines and expectations with all staff and hold additional individual meetings for staff who are on a summative year cycle. Our survey results indicate for the area of educator effectiveness implementation show that those who agree and strongly agree that time and support is provided to them for the evaluation process to be implemented has been slowly increasing over time. These remain, these results may also reflect how the district has adjusted educator effectiveness. When we originally started, we had required components of educator effectiveness, as are highlighted on Slide Three, and optional components of educator effectiveness as a requirement for staff. So additional items such as documentation logs and surveys were required. Throughout time, we have phased out documentation logs and surveys, not because they are not important to show what the professional is doing, but because they are not as vital to the growth of an educator and do not have as much growth and impact on student achievement.
So as Kim mentioned, the evaluation process is important in supporting teacher growth and student achievement. It's not based on a one-time high-stakes observation, as you see in the visual, or a stamp of approval, but it's really about that ongoing coaching and feedback to support teacher growth. Kim has also been one of our trained educator effectiveness district trainers through CISA as well, and so she and I have been able to partner at our monthly principal meetings for the last three or four years to provide different professional learning opportunities for principals, as well as Chris has joined us this year. So how do we ensure that our evaluators are effectively using our evaluation system as well for teachers? So as I mentioned, we use our monthly professional, our monthly principal meetings to provide professional learning opportunities. So one of the areas in the survey is do teachers ask questions regarding, do teachers find the feedback they're receiving during their evaluation useful and valuable in the classroom? So that was an area in the survey that indicated that we needed to see some more growth in our district, and we know how important that feedback can be. And so as a result of that, over the last three or four years, as I mentioned, Kim and I have provided professional development to principals around coaching, providing actionable feedback, how to support teachers in writing a student learning objective, and also instructional leadership. So we've used those opportunities in those meetings around professional learning and coaching as well. We're also required every year to provide a calibration, and so CISA VI as well provides resources for calibration. And so we have videos where we watch teachers teaching in classrooms, and then we evaluate the six standards as individuals, and then we talk about them as a group of principals and administrators together to ensure that we are consistently evaluating teachers. We've also used walkthroughs in buildings with principals where we go into classrooms, we observe, and then when we leave, we have conversations about what type of feedback would we give, you know, what are the real strengths in instructional practices and areas for, for feedback as well. So we use those as tools to ensure that we have effective evaluators in the classroom. As well as at the district level, we have a supervision platform where all of our evaluations are housed, and so we can do informal checks to make sure that all of those evaluations are happening within the timeline as well that Kim shared with you, and that they're providing that actionable feedback to our educators. So as we look at, what does that feedback look like? So as Kim mentioned, we use the strong model for feedback. When we initially implemented the strong model, it was really about just documenting, what did you see in the classroom? And there wasn't a lot about why is that important? So this is what you need to do in the classroom, but what, why am I doing this, and why is it important to student learning? So as you can see, previously, it may have been there was not a learning objective in the classroom, and so it was unclear what that learning target was during the lesson. So now, as we've evolved into giving more actionable and useful feedback, we may indicate that there was the absence of a learning objective in the classroom during the lesson, but then we're also including that students need to have that learning objective in classroom. They need to know what the learning target is, they need to know what they're going to be assessed on in the lesson, and then also that that learning target ensures students are on target to meet the expected grade level benchmarks. So really giving them the purpose and the why behind, you know, this is what we need as part of best practices in the classroom. So as a result of providing professional learning for the last three or four years, you can see that we were below the state in 2017, and so we've really been targeting that professional learning. Do teachers feel the, the questions are, you know, do teachers feel that the feedback principals are providing are useful in improving their practice in the classroom? And so that's gone from 55% agree, agreeing or strongly agreeing to 87%. So the state has made some growth, but our growth has been accelerated, you know, in comparison to the state.
The fourth area of the survey examines job satisfaction. Now, one may ask, what does job satisfaction have to do with supervision and evaluation? But all of the research shows that employees who receive regular feedback on their performance and progress instead of annual or quarterly have increased productivity and less stress because employees are not left to guess as to whether or not they are meeting their goals and making progress in their job performance. As Alison just spoke about, educator effectiveness focuses on a feedback cycle and regular coaching to improve outcomes and to meet goals. So when employees are meeting their goals and improving, they generally are satisfied with their job. Our survey results indicate that staff feel satisfied with their jobs and find their employment to be satisfactory, and they feel enthusiastic about the work that they're doing. So while the state remains relatively steady in job satisfaction, the district continues to make growth even during times of uncertainty and the pandemic.
So we use the survey, as we shared before, and how do we improve the feedback we're giving in the classroom? And so that's an area where we really targeted in providing professional learning with our evaluators. So as we reviewed the results that we received on the survey this year, it indicated that an area in staff collaboration is an area that we need to grow as a district. And so within staff collaboration, that, that doesn't mean that our staff are not talking to each other or planning with each other. The questions in staff collaboration really ask about, do I have opportunities to observe my colleagues in other classrooms, and do I have opportunities to look at my data and assessment and talk with my colleagues in a grade level or content area team? So as we have since 2017 made limited progress in that area. So that really, this summer, as we're planning for what do we need to focus our professional learning around as a district, really helped drive that decision for us. And so as a result, what we put in place, moving into this school year, is one piece is professional learning communities. And professional learning communities are about, it's, it's not a new concept, it's, it's a practice that's been around for probably fifteen or twenty years, but it's something that we needed to really reestablish as a practice in our district. And so professional learning communities are a group of educators that meet regularly, they share their expertise with each other, and they work collaboratively to really improve instruction and student performance. And a piece to that is really examining their assessment data. How are students doing on their assessments to show that they're progressing in their learning? So K-12 is using professional learning communities this year. We've also, throughout that process, we looked at our professional development days that we have in the district. And so sometimes we think of our professional development days as we have a speaker come in. Well, February 18th, we had an elementary professional development day. So they were given the morning to meet in their professional learning community. They had recently all taken a They had recently all taken a literacy assessment in grades two through five and a phonemic and phonics awareness, phonemic awareness and phonics assessment in K-1. So they had multiple hours that morning to sit together, look at their assessment data, determine, did our students make progress? Which students still need reteaching and have not mastered these skills? Which students have mastered the skills and need extension and then time for planning? So that, you know, we try to use that professional development time as well to meet this goal of improving staff collaboration. You've also, in previous board presentations, I've talked about the math learning walks. So an adjustment we've made to the math learning walks this year is we've invited teachers to come along. So they're going into the classrooms and observing other teachers teaching math K-12. I had the opportunity to, I was on a learning walk, and I was with a fifth-grade teacher, and we were in a second-grade classroom, and the teacher was introducing fractions with our new bridges program. And that fifth-grade teacher walked out and he said, "I can't believe the foundation that our second-grade teachers are building in fractions so that they're going to be prepared when they come to fifth grade." And I always question, what were they learning before they got here? Well, I know, and I can't wait to get those kids now. So, you know, it's really exciting to see the impact that opening up those opportunities for teachers has. And also trying to give more opportunities for our new teachers with their mentors to go into their mentor classroom and observe too. And I think when we see, you know, the staff collaboration goal is an area we want to grow and put some of these action steps in place, you know, it's, it's, you know, teachers, they're our most valuable resource to each other as well, and they can learn the most from each other. And so I think these opportunities will continue to provide that, so hopefully to see growth in this area of the survey moving forward. Again, how are we using the results? So we review the results as a district at the district level, and that's how we determined we needed to focus on providing more useful feedback. And now we have shifted, as we've seen that growth, to, you know, staff collaboration and providing more of those opportunities. Also, the principals at the beginning of the year all received their individual building evaluate, results and evaluation, and then they set a goal based on their building results. So we continue to use that data from the survey that's required from our state to inform decisions around teaching and learning and to inform what our professional learning will look like in the classroom as well. So as we close, teacher and principal evaluations matter because our teachers and principals matter. And so as Dr. Strong, who developed this model, you know, if we really want to make changes in education, then, you know, we really have to continue to focus on how can we continue to improve teacher and principal quality as well in our schools? And we know that that's what our promises are about as well. We also know that we have a state report card where we want to show growth. And so we really need to continue to focus on how can we provide relevant feedback that's going to help us all grow. We also know that the research says highly effective leaders, as well as teachers, can raise the achievement of their students by two to seven months in a single school year as well. So thank you for the opportunity to share with you about our state results, educator effectiveness results. And Kim and I will take a moment if you have any specific questions.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to make a comment. I've been hearing about PLCs from, I have the opportunity of having kids in the district, especially little kids, and I communicate often with our teachers, obviously, they're wonderful people. And I've been hearing about PLCs, and I kind of thought, what is that? And, and you really talked about it and highlighted so much great information to share with us, and it was like a full circle moment. On that day of the professional development, I had communicated for different reasons with two of the elementary teachers, and, and they shared that they were doing these things. So it was kind of fun to hear you talk about that. And I also really appreciated the story of the learning walk and the fifth-grade teacher and the second-grade teacher. That was very powerful to hear that story. So I appreciate, this was a great presentation. Thank you for taking the time to share it with us. I, I'm glad to see it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Steve.
I just want to give Kim and Allison, Chris, and our principals, and ultimately our teachers, you know, this is the hard work now that has to get done to move the needle on, on outcomes for kids, right? And this, this is, you know, all part and parcel of not only instructional resources that are aligned and current and all of that, but also really implementing, you know, good instructional practice systematically from school to school across the district to, you know, get the results that we're after. And so that, again, you know, that foundational work, as you can see, is, is done, it's in place, there's, you know, there's a lot of work. A lot of schools will tell you they have professional learning communities. I, I like to call it, they have PLC light, right? There's a difference between PLC light and actually really living and breathing PLC work every single day. And if you do that, you will get results for kids. And so I'm really excited that, you know, that's another one of the strategies that, you know, the district has put into place to support our principals and to grow our teachers. Thank you.
I was going to say that, first of all, this is great, and it's very impressive. And, but as I'm thinking about it, I'm wondering, with all of the meetings that teachers have, you know, one of the best, most important gifts you can give a teacher is time. And so when are we going to, I mean, I, I love this, I love this, I'd love to be able to do this myself. But, you know, with X number of classes and essays and everything else, this kind, it's so easy to put this stuff on the back burner. And so I'm just wondering how we are, how are we balancing that, you know, the issue of time for our staff?
Sure. That's a great question, and time is always challenging to find for teachers and for any of us during, you know, our work as well. So, for example, one of the, the times, the February eighth Professional Development Day is to just give them a solid few hours to be able to have those conversations and the feedback on the conversations they were able to have, and how excited they were as teams. I got a lot of feedback on, you know, how much growth our kindergarten and first graders made in phonics, and so it's, it's, it was really validating for teachers as well about all of the hard work they're doing to finally be able to see that. So it is a challenge, and so we're trying to help. That, that's probably our greatest challenge right now is helping find the time because we are establishing it as an expectation because we find the, you know, the value in helping move student achievement forward. But we also have to continue to work on trying to find those times. So most buildings do have time built in during the day for weekly planning either as grade level teams or content area teams. So sometimes they're trying to use that time as well to use that data, but to also help them plan the next steps in instruction.
And I would just say that we have to give credit to our principals for helping the teachers to balance this. So obviously, we want them looking at data, but what's the key data that we want them to look at? Because we collect a lot of data, but where are those areas for growth and are they focusing on that? What are they putting into place in that? And then when are they going to return and look at their investment on the strategies that they put into place? So, you know, they may meet this week to focus on the literacy, but they may not come back to that for another couple of weeks, just to stay on target with where their kids are at. So it does take a lot of facilitation from our principals to help them guide through, okay, this is the data I want you to look at, this is what we're going to put into place. You know, change doesn't happen overnight, so I'm going to come back in two weeks to see where you're at with this and help coach them along with that. And like Allison said, a lot of that goes during their grade level times that they're already meeting or designated prep times that they already have, or department meetings that they already have.
But, but it is something we have to continue to, to work at.
Sure.
All right.
I'd like to comment on that, too. So it's always the chicken or the egg, right? Do you figure out the work first and then let that, that drive the need for time? Or do you give people the time and then they didn't exactly know how they were supposed to use it, right? So we're taking this approach of, you know, we've got to get the work going the right way first, and then we need to leave some grassroots, you know, we need the teachers to start saying, hey, you know, if we had some more time to do this, right? And you legitimize the work by legitimizing the time, overtime. And so as we move forward into the future, the, the school calendar and the school day schedule are, are things probably likely that are going to land back in this boardroom for reevaluation and consideration, because if you want to really do PLCs and not PLC light, you have to legitimize the work by legitimizing the work time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Oh, no. Okay. All right, so now we have a presentation on our leadership profile from our consultants at HYA. We have Sarah, Sarah's here, and we have Sarah Jerome here, Dr. Jerome, and we have Dr. Nudecker on the phone. And you, or we'll have her on the phone here.
All right, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Sarah Jerome here and Pat Nudecker on the phone. We are so pleased to have been a part of this work so far and to get to know Janesville, the staff, the community. We have been very excited about what we've heard and what we've learned about your district. And it has just been a delight, really, to learn how optimistic you are about your future and with very good reason. Of course, always within school districts, there's plenty of good work to do ahead, but you have many talented people amongst this group as well as this group, and a number of people that we've met in your community who are such strong supporters of the school. So it's exciting, really, to be a part of this and to move forward and to help you move forward with your next selection. The leadership profile really is just a blueprint of what we have learned from the twelve hundred people who've responded, both in the survey and in the phone conversations and focus groups. And that helps us, one, to recruit your applicants for this position and to help match what they bring to what your community says you need and want. So this serves also not only for you in helping you make that selection, but when the new superintendent comes to the district, this also may serve to help them know what, one, are the strengths, two, what the challenges are. And those things will perhaps set the stage for moving forward in a very positive way. So what did we find out when we did this work and listened? And perhaps that's mostly what we did, is to listen to you, listen to the administrators, the teachers, the students, the community members. And we learned from that perspective what they viewed as great about the district, what they viewed as the challenges of the district, and what the characteristics were that they thought would help make that person successful. As you know, if you've read the report, you know that we've had a good turnout in terms of survey responses. We've had eleven hundred and sixty-four people respond to the survey, and that survey was available for three weeks from February seventh to the twenty-fifth. We had thirteen focus groups, and we've had nineteen phone interviews. So in the survey, there were forty-four percent of the parents of that, of that eleven hundred and sixty-four, forty-four percent were parents, twenty-six were certified staff, and eleven were certified, were classified staff. And they provided some important information for us, both in the survey responses as well as what we've heard from you. Some of the great things that we've learned about your district. It's a great place to live. People are glad to be here. Some of the graduates, if they leave, they come back with their families and put their children in schools, and they've said they're pleased with the results of that. They've also made some suggestions. There are rich opportunities here, and there is an optimism and a hopefulness that we felt very tangible in our conversations and in what we heard from the community. A real strong talent pool of civic-minded people who care about the district, who care about the schools, who care about children, and make the Janesville promise a living, breathing, breathing, vibrant promise. And that promise was a very appealing thing to our applicants. Almost every single applicant mentioned it and how they felt that that was such an important part of what Janesville is and why they were attracted to Janesville. Janesville's an ideal location, centrally located between Milwaukee, Chicago, Madison. It's a diverse business community. Partnerships and collaboration are very available in this community with the business community. The quality of life is good here. Many people pointed out the, the land of the parks, twenty, twenty-three hundred parks, I think. We heard about the empathetic and resilient community, the people committed to helping others who wanted to have a safety net for all in this community. There is a very strong belief that working together, Janesville School District is going to be a wonderful, successful school district for every child. There is a mindset of positiveness, and it's an exciting time for Janesville. Those are just a few of the things that are positive that we learned, and there are a number of challenges that were articulated as well. Some said we need more innovation, some said we need more consistency in place, more systems, some pointed out some financial challenges, the need for a cohesive team working in a systems approach. Some worried about the increasing poverty in the area, the need for great schools of attracting great businesses and their interconnection and the interlinking of that. Some mentioned the need for a deeper dive into data analysis, but not wanting to go to data paralysis and focusing on operational and systemic as well as systematic approaches. Everyone mentioned test scores, but they also, at the same time, mentioned that progress is being made, substantial, important progress. And that needs to continue with perhaps greater velocity, but that it's really important steps that you've already made toward that. Communication and transparency we mentioned, and of course, things like mental health, discipline, attendance, race, equity, all of those things are important to people in the school community. So I'd like to just pause right now for just a minute and let my colleague, Pat Nudecker, who is on the phone, speak to the survey results. And then we will mention the coalescing of all of this information into the profile of desired characteristics. Pat, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can everybody hear me all right? Great. I would just like to highlight and walk you through the report which was generated from your survey. And I know that you have it in front of you and that you've been able to read it, but I will elaborate for the benefit of your audience as well. The survey, as you know, was conducted in your school district for a period of about three weeks. The respondents totaled one thousand one hundred sixty-four stakeholders. That is a tremendous response. With almost half of the respondents, the largest group, were parents, parents of students attending school. attending school. And that was with 44.8%, almost 50% of your respondents were parents. Over a quarter of the respondents were staff, certified licensed staff, your professional staff, and they made up the second most populous group. And the third largest group was support and classified staff. So you can see that of the six groups that were able to identify them as they responded, your parents and your staff had the highest participation. The survey, as you also know, was available in English and in Spanish, and so participants were able to choose the language when they logged in. The survey tabulates the statements to be considered the greatest strength. And the items on the survey come from a research base of characteristics and qualities of school districts and superintendent leadership, leadership that leads to success. The five most frequently selected responses to perceived district strengths were that technology is integrated into the classroom. Number two, the district employs effective teachers, administrators, and support staff in all its schools. Number three, the district schools are safe. Number four, facilities are well maintained. And number five, teachers personalize instructional strategies to address individual learning needs. The top-rated leadership profile characteristics of a new superintendent highlighted the following. Your community and all stakeholders is looking for someone who can foster a positive professional climate of mutual trust and respect among faculty, staff, and administrators. Someone who can also recruit, employ, and retain effective personnel throughout the district in all schools. Someone who can establish a culture of high expectations for all students and personnel. Someone who will be able to provide and lead with transparent communication, and someone who will be visible throughout the district and actively engaged in the community. These are very desirable characteristics. What's most interesting, if you take a look at survey, at your survey report and take a look at page four, you will see a line graph with colored circles representing the six categories, administrator, certified staff, community member, high school student, parent of student attending school, and support or classified staff. First and foremost, it's important to note that the items that were seen as positive characteristics in your school district and the characteristics of your new leader were tightly aligned with what we heard in the focus groups' individual interviews that Sarah just presented on. The line graph, however, will show you how individual groups responded, and this document then can become a guide for you and the new superintendent as you start working together and lay out some goals and a focus for the superintendent's new year. On a positive note, all groups seemed to be tightly clustered when they responded to the leadership profile characteristics, the characteristics desired of your new superintendent. So that would mean that for the most part, your six groups were closely aligned with what they're looking for in a leader. If you look at the other line graph, if you will, the state of the district results by constituent groups shows a greater variance. And you see that visually because those colored circles are more spread out. And that means that, for example, the administrative group who ranks the state of the district high compared to perhaps high school students who ranked it more on a lower scale, allows you to see the perception of each of those groups. And again, this isn't negative, and it should not be seen as alarming. This is just a great summary of the research in the survey to help you and a superintendent ask some critical questions and maybe investigate why different groups perceive the district differently. And frankly, when we've done this with other communities, oftentimes it's communication. Communication perhaps can be targeted to certain groups so they know and understand more about the district. But in summary, and you can look at the leadership profile details, each item, how each respondent scored, each group of respondents scored, it will rate and rank the top for you, it will show you the variance, and it will give you an item analysis of the overall state of the district. And again, this becomes a nice document for you and your new superintendent to use as one piece of information as you begin planning the next steps for Janesville. Once accepted, this also is obviously a public document, and I believe it's already, I believe it will go on your website, and the public will be able to see the responses. And again, congratulations to everybody and thank you for participating. You had a very high response rate.
So in conclusion, I'll just mention that there was a lot of consensus around the desired characteristics. And just for brevity's sake, I'll say, in four segments, you're looking for visionary, inspirational leader, an effective communicator, instructional leader, and an efficient manager. And of course, there are plenty of subsets under that that I won't go into right now, but I'm sure you perhaps have had a chance to read those. So I'd like to close by thanking all of you for participating. I want to thank Denise for arranging so many meetings and helping us get connected in ways that we needed to be. And also thank the various administrators and staff that participated as well. It's been very helpful to us in helping bring you the very best candidates, and we are so pleased to know how many are excited about Janesville. That's wonderful. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any questions? Well, thank you very much. I look forward to keeping this process going, so thank you. Okay, so we have a summary of board requests. I don't have anything new. Everything has been assigned, basically, and so future meetings, dates, and times. Ms. Jensen, can you help us with that?
It would be my pleasure. We have two potential special board of education meetings coming up, one this Thursday at 5:00 PM and one next Monday on March 14th at 4:00 PM. Both are closed session meetings to do interviews for the process of selecting a new superintendent. We have a benefits committee meeting scheduled for Wednesday, April 6th at 4:00 PM here at the Educational Services Center. And our next board meeting is Tuesday, April 12th at 6:00 PM for the regular meeting here as well at the Educational Services Center.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have reached the end of our agenda. We are adjourned, and we will go back into closed here.